Hello, everyone. My name is Nicole D'Souza and I am the Director of Communications for the Americas. First off, I want to thank everybody, both in this room today and online. We are so thrilled to have this opportunity to have a livestream with our entire Americas community. So, thank you again, everyone, for joining us today and everyone who's taken the time to submit questions. We've received fantastic insight and fantastic questions. And with that, I would like to turn this over to our fantastic moderator today, Cheryl Ginyer-Jones, the MD for the Americas.
Thanks, Nicole, and welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone, online. Welcome, everyone, here in Arlington. Happy to have you here. It's great to see such a big crowd here and hear all the buzziness. So, great to be here. As you know, Ramble is a foundation-owned company, and that's unique for us. We are privileged this week to have the foundation in the Americas. They started on the West Coast earlier this week, talking to employees and stakeholders, and now we have them here in Arlington to talk to us. So, really, really looking forward to the conversation. We are doubly privileged to have the Chair of the Ramble Group, Klaus Hemmingsen, here as well. So, we're looking forward to having a great conversation. What I'd like to do first is introduce Kevin Smith, who's going to give a safety moment. And Kevin is a member of the Foundation Advisory Board. So, over to you, Kevin.
Thank you, Cheryl. I'm Kevin Smith. I'm a project manager in Ramble Water in New York City, and I'll be delivering the safety moment today about inclusion, specifically how it relates to the LGBTQ+ community as it is Pride Month in the United States. For those of you who don't know, Pride started exactly one year after the Stonewall riots to the day. And a group -- what made the Stonewall riots unique was that police had raided gathering spots for LGBTQ+ for decades, but this was the first time that the community fought back and fought back successfully. So, one year later, a crowd gathered and marched from the West Village in New York City up to Central Park, and that has evolved into what is now Pride Month. So, I won't read this slide to you, but as this pertains to us, at Ramble, we respect and embrace diversity in all its forms, and we wish to create inclusive culture where everyone thrives. We all have a shared responsibility in fostering that culture. A few points are cultivating a welcoming environment by engaging with colleagues, listening and learning actively to colleagues with an open mind, challenging biases and microaggressions, and then promoting inclusive communication by using inclusive language. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for that safety moment. Fantastic way to get us started. Now, to my panelists. First of all, thank you so much for coming. Thank you so much for being here. I know the audience is very excited about hearing from you and your perspective. So, let's first just have you introduce yourselves. Robert, we'll start with you and just go down the line.
Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Robert Arp, and I'm Chair of the Ramble Foundation. I started my career in Ramble in 1981, so you can count it to 43 years. And I've been in many, many positions during that period. Frankly, I love the company.
And my name is Klaus Hemmingsen. I'm the Chair of the Ramble Group Board of Directors, and I can count my tenure in Ramble in months, 15 months, to be precise. So, that's not as long, but before that, I had a 40-year career at Maersk, at the Executive Board there, and been traveling the world, you could say, so really enjoying my time at Ramble.
Yeah, and my name is Nate Stojback, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Ramble Foundation. I have been in Ramble for 32 years, just retired at the end of last year as a Group Director for Sustainability and Corporate Responsibility. And I can see a lot of familiar faces, so I'm really happy to be here.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sean Nielsen. I'm the Managing Director of the Ramble Foundation. I joined this position in 2022, and before that, I was 24 years in Ramble, latest as the Country Market Director for Management Consulting in Denmark.
Great. Thank you all, and welcome again to the panel. As Nicole said, we have lots of good questions to ask the panelists, but I'm going to start with Robert first. Robert, you know, we've received a lot of good feedback from your presentations and your visit on the West Coast. Can you share with this audience what the foundation is all about?
Yeah, I'll try.
Fantastic.
And I brought some slides.
Perfect.
Can I show them?
Yes, you may.
We had a meeting on that.
And he doesn't need to ask my permission.
Okay, everybody. Nice to be here and looking forward to telling you a little about the why, the how, and the what in the Ramble Foundation. I think it's important that this picture is clear on what is the foundation and therefore also what is the role of the foundation, and I'll try to do that in 10 minutes. Ramble has a history, and that history started in 1945 with the two professors at the Technical University in Denmark, Bør Rampe and Johan Hanneman. They were looking out of the window, and you can see on the upper right there that we had a city of Copenhagen which had suffered a little during World War II, but it was not like the German cities or anything like that. But still, the idea from the two professors were that, okay, we can do something about that. We can do something with our technical skills who could maybe make us some money, but also give something to society. And that is quite important in the story of Ramble and also in the story of the Ramble Because the company went on for, that must have been 17 years, 27?
25 years.
Yeah, a little more. And the two professors were getting a little older, and they had some partners, but all the partners and them agreed that they would give the company to a foundation. So, they created a foundation and gave the ownership to the foundation. And the foundation was then asked to continue the company, fulfilling some requirements from the founders. And that was, say, in essence, to behave good, be a good partner, be a partner who doesn't cheat, who actually is transparent, and do it in a way where also the employees felt that they liked to work for Ramble, that they felt at home in Ramble, and that, of course, they could also count on the Ramble support if they were in some kind of need or crisis. So, that was actually the basic thoughts of the two founders. That has been written down in our charter, but such a charter is maybe a bit overall and is difficult to sort of catch the detail and be a little prescriptive on how to do things. And therefore, in the foundation, we, 8, 10 years ago, actually decided to prepare a new version of the charter, which we call the Legacy of Ramble. And that was about pointing out how did we interpretate the development of Ramble to a level, an outtime level, on what should be governing the business of the foundation. It's not about how to make money, but it's actually on how to behave when you do it. And that's something about purpose, that's something about people, that's something about a culture where you can recognize yourself, it's something about commitment to excellence because we want to be good in anything we do, and it's also something about maybe leading managing companies in a little special way, which we actually have called the Nordic Tradition. And it's just something about a flat organizational structure, a possibility to speak up, and there also an obligation to management to listen to those who speaks up. And that is sort of the five pillars, you could say, of our legacy, and that is what we actually try, from the foundation side, to convey to anybody in Ramble, but of course, first of all, to the Board of Directors. Because the right side of this slide actually shows the role of the foundation board, I would rather say the non-role of the foundation board when it comes to the operation. Because as you can see from the dotted line, all operation takes part by the Board of Directors and then the Group of Executive Directors, and therefore, maybe you should say a little about that, House.
Yeah, just because I think it's an impressive structure. It's a three-tier structure that is really separate, if you like. So, the foundation, as Robert is saying, is the owners, 100% ownership, and therefore guiding everything that takes place in the company, but has appointed an independent Board of Directors, where we have three employee representatives, but the six appointed directors are all independent. I think that gives a strong independent view on our operations. And what we do in the Board of Directors is, of course, to guide and support, spar, challenge the management, but also relate and take the big decisions. So, obviously, there are structures in place for limits of authorities, and that's where the Board of Directors go in and endorse, amongst other things, larger reorganizations, larger acquisitions, well, smaller acquisitions as well, actually, and also if we have major projects. So, I think it's important that we take guidance from the foundation. It's incredibly important. It goes through everything we do, but the decision is basically made by the Group Board of Directors. And just shortly, of course, the management team have their own tier, so they are the ones running the day-to-day operation. The board stays away from the details unless it gets hairy, but so it is really a three-tier structure that works, in Ramble's case, very well.
And it's important for the foundation that you understand this. It's important that Klaus and I understand our roles, meaning that we can, of course, have a dialogue, but as such, decisions and execution that lies with Klaus. That's how it is. This is on the business, of course, that would be all things where we step in. So, reverting to the foundation and then now talking about us. Last year, we made a strategy. We haven't had that before, but we think that it was time to actually write down on a piece of paper what is it that we want to do in the future. That was, of course, based on the past, but we came out with two purposes of the Ramble Foundation. First one, and also the most important one, is to be the best owner of Ramble. So, we want to have an ownership where we follow the company, discuss with the company, and from our side, do the, make the decisions that are best from the company. That could be on how do we distribute the dividend and stuff like that. I mean, the financial side of it is part of what we discuss on where to put the money. But the second one, of course, is maybe the one where we are most visible, and that is on the sustainable side. That is actually how we could support a sustainable division, development of society. So, this is another operating role. That's an operating role we have, whereas the other role is more passive. And what do we then do when we drill down one more step in our work? As you can see here to the right of the slide, that we have some tasks that we do on a running basis. We manage our own finances. We have some money, and we donate some of them, we invest some of them, but we see too, of course, that we take care of our finances. We also do some donations. I'll revert to that later. And then comes the values question, and that is maybe where we, that involves both on the donation side but also on the corporate side. That's actually where we sometimes steps in. Because as I said before, we are a value-based company. We have our legacy, and that legacy should lead to us living our values. Let me give you an example on the dialogue we then may have with the management and with the Board of Directors, and that could be on military. It is so that Mr. Ramble was a pacifist, and that meant actually that in the old Ramble company going up to the 90s, it was absolutely no-go to do any work at all for the military, absolutely no-go. Then, of course, the company got broader, situation also maybe changed on the security situation in the world. So, we started looking at it, but maybe still on a little, not very distinct way. But lately, on this discussion on military, based on the situation, the global situation that we see today, we have, together with the Board of Directors and the management of the company, come down with a set of rules on how to treat military services. So, this is an example of something that was created, a thought, a basic principle that was created long ago in the company, now being modernized and put into a 2024 style, so that everybody should hopefully know what do we think and how do we act on these terms. So, the foundation has a role to play on, say, the values in the company and interpreting them and living them. Last slide is there, that is succession, and that is, of course, to be clear that we actually have two succession issues in the foundation board, our own. Fact is that we actually decide ourselves who's going to be in the foundation. That's a tricky role, but we also have the succession in Klaus's board. So, it's actually us who decides who to sit in that board, and that is probably our most distinct owner rule. Maybe it's the only actual owner rule, but it's there and it's quite important. So, this is what we work with in the foundation board. We're 12 members, and we sort of fall into three groups. Everybody here is a former or present employee in Ramble. And then we have three groups. Let's take them from the low end, the young end, sorry. And we have, yeah, but that was really a mistake of me because when you are in that board, everybody is on the same level. But the young end comes from the employee representatives. There was an election in Denmark where four members are appointed during a normal election. Then we have the mid-aged level, which will typically be managers working on a day-to-day basis in Ramble. We have four of them. And then there'll be the old timers, which are former Ramble employees, and we also are four of them. That gives a good distribution over age, over experience, and we feel that it works. Discussion point is, of course, and we actually had this also this morning, that it seems as if the foundation ownership, as I'm now trying to describe to you, is a game changer, a factor when people should select their workplace, and therefore, of course, it's important for us that you know about it and you therefore can tell the story to new employees. And that's the whole idea of being owned in the way that we are, that there should be a little more freedom, a little more, yeah, empowerment is actually the right word to. And it seems from these interviews that we've made that we are right in that assumption that the employees like it a lot. As I said before, we do not operate anything, and as such, we do not have any, should not have any direct dialogue with the employees. However, we have four items that are mentioned to you here. Employee share scheme, I'm not going to that, but you can buy shares in the company. Foundation Advisory Forum, much more interesting. Kevin is probably now a former member or a present member, one year more, one year more. Yeah, because two, three years ago, we decided that since we were only Danish employees represented in the board, it would be good for us to have a broader employee represent. It's not a representation, it's an advisory forum, but it's a possibility of us to collect input from all over the world. So, therefore, we created that. We have two meetings per year. We set the agenda. We would like to discuss this, but sometimes, of course, also the employees come and say, yeah, we'd also like to talk about this and talk about that, and then we do that. We have a lot of benefit from knowing what is actually, how some of the decisions are felt, how our donations felt, and what issues could be on the agenda. But it's not something about complaining about the ventilation in the office or something like that. I mean, we are on another level on that, and it's not meant to be somewhere where you could actually complain about the management, not at all. You know about the members in the board and the Flores Program. I think we can skip that and just show you this picture of, you can see that we're happy, all of us, in this picture. And I also think that maybe it's also something to get a trip to Copenhagen to visit the main office and being a little, yeah, celebrated there. Last thing, donations. I think you are aware that we do that. It is, I mean, I don't know actually whether $4 million per year is something that impresses you, but that's actually the level that we are on right now. We split into research, education, Ramble PhDs, then we have humanitarian support, then we have the current and former employees in need, and I'd like to say a little about that because it's a little maybe neglected from time to time. But if an employee or a former employee has a need that could be regarded to illness, death, or whatever, it's possible to make an application to the foundation to get financial support to something. It should pass through the MD in the country, but it is a possibility. And the last thing is our award, which we hand out once a year, maybe we should have some from America next time to find a subject which could.
We did, actually. We did, actually.
Yeah, but you can, of course, never know who will win.
Biodiversity in Amazonas.
Okay, yeah. This one, I think we can skip. It just shows that our donations is on a positive development upwards. I think that was for me.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for that. It was a great overview of the foundation. Klaus, can you share a perspective? Klaus, can you share a perspective from the group?
I will do that, and let me just make two comments. First of all, I think the Foundation Advisory Forum, that is a great thing to have, so I'm really pleased that you have that, Robert, in the foundation. I think it's a great opportunity for anybody who gets the chance to join. I hope Kevin agrees. And the same thing is, just when you look at that foundation donation chart, maybe it's not big, but you're a part of enabling those donations to take place, and they all go for good purposes. So, also keep that in mind, that some of the profits that you're also making is actually channeled back to society, and I think that's important to keep in mind. So, it's an important slide. I have brought six topics. I'll be brief because I think the questions are more important than me telling you something you probably already know, but I do have some points I want to make because I think they're important, and three of them are actually the main reasons why I decided to, of course, being honored and humbled about being asked by the foundation to join the board, but there was at least three reasons that made it easy to say yes. And if I just start with governance, then we already talked about that, how it's distributed, the responsibilities between the foundation, the Board of Directors of the group, and management. But just to show you who we are in the group board, the last three on the slide there, Johan, Helene, and Michael, they are employee-elected. You probably know that. The two of them were just elected here first of April, and Helene was re-elected. And the rest of the board, pleased to say, three female and three male. That is not always the case in Denmark, so I think the foundation did a good job in providing diversity. We have two non-Danes. Probably you could say we should have more, but so far, it's not only diversity in genders and nationality, but it's really the diversity of thought that I think has brought into the board. We have people that knows about business, we have people knows about organization, people know about performance, huge contracts, M&amp;A transitions, and we have a few industry experts as well. So, really a good board with a good dynamics. And we have, if you take the full board and all committees, we have more than 40 meetings a year. So, it's not a board that is not engaged. So, we're really engaged heavily with management, and that's always a pleasure. And speaking about management, you know them, I hope. We have, of course, Jens and Peter and Michael and Loone, longstanding executives, but then we have Jakob as an interim CFO, as we are currently in the search of a new CFO to follow Marianne Sørensen, who left. And this is one of my first reasons to join because I think not only this team is highly competent and really engaged, and when I had the first conversations, it was very easy to say, this is a team that I want to work with and the board wants to work with. But I also thought that I heard the resonance of the rest of the organization through that team. And you know, any team and any success starts with good leaders, and I find them to be good leaders, I hope you agree, but that was at least a reason to join, and we have really good collaborations. I would just say one thing because it also goes for business when you go down through the ranks. I think between us, we have an open and transparent and direct dialogue between management and the Board of Directors. We have an open and transparent and honest dialogue, and that is just so important. I can tell you, it doesn't happen in all companies, but here we have a good dialogue. Then the second reason for making it easy to join, that was actually what Robert was leading into, the whole purpose of Ramble and the legacy of Ramble, because I think for any company, having strong beliefs and co-beliefs and values to guide what we do, that is ultimately an important thing. And I'll say, we have the mission, vision, values, and commitments. You probably know them at heart better than I do, but creating sustainable societies where people and nature flourish, that is a noble cause. And once that we, you know, I'm just, I'm using this slide to also implore you to always keep it in mind. We discuss these topics often in the board, and I hope you also let them guide your day-to-day business. A globally leading consultancy, well, I heard all morning that globally leading, but you at least want to be leading in US, so your management has great ambitions, and that's great to hear as part of the world. But globally leading consultancy, that also comes with taking responsibility and delivering, and I think Ramble is really good at that. The values of insight and excellence, empowerment and collaboration, integrity and empathy, enjoyment and passion. I know that that's not necessarily what you get into every morning before you get your first cup of coffee, but it's just, you know, sometimes take a moment to let it sink in because that's really what should guide our everyday work, that we live those values. And as I was used to say somewhere else in my career, if you're ever in doubt, consult the values. You can always ask management and everything else, but consult the values. It actually shows us and tells us which way to go, and then I shall be the first to admit it's not always we can go there because there are a lot of obstacles, but at least we should not go where it prevents us to go. So, consult the values. And then the commitments that come with that, you know, being a trusted partner, being passionate, really caring for our people and caring for how we develop the organization. I think I heard, I don't know how many presentations we had this morning, 12, 14?
A bunch.
And at least half of them, they were lacking people, resources, and more skills. So, caring for our employees, developing the organization, making sure that we all the time keep a focus on having the right people in front of the business is just so important. Health and safety, obviously, I'll get back to that. And then the company that is dedicated to the legacy of Ramble through the top-tier performance and good business principles, I'll just emphasize once again that the direction we get from the foundation is ultimately the guiding light for the Board of Directors. We do take the decisions in the business on a day-to-day basis, together with management, but we can never stray away from the legacy, and that's why it's often brought up. I think every second board meeting, at least, we discuss some of them in detail. And then society, we all want to contribute to society. I think we all know society has developed probably adversely. If we look at the last decade or two, at least we have realized some challenges, and if we can play a role, we should all be really proud and passionate about that. At least I am, the board is, and management is as well, and I hope you are. Well, I felt this morning that you are, so I'm not in doubt. Health and safety, time is running, so I will not dwell on it. I'll just say that if you look at the numbers, it's a little bit of a busy slide with details that does not really matter so much. But if you look at the year-to-date performance across the group, we are not doing too well. So, it's just a thing that I brought in. I spent 15 years in the oil and gas industry. I work a lot with Michael Simmsgaard. I work a lot with Michael Simmsgaard directly with the HSE development in Rambler. And I know it's difficult because we are consultants. We don't always, we're not in charge necessarily. We get involved on different levels and different places in the organization. But having, in our kind of business, a lost-time injury rate of 0.6, that's just too high. I mean, the risk factor is not that high, so we should be doing better. Good for you. This is a good place to visit because you're doing okay. Not only are you doing okay not having lost-time incidents, I don't see that as an indicator for safety because we all know that that's coincidental. You can have an incident tomorrow, God forbid, but not. But you are doing well on the restrictive incidents, and you are doing well on your reporting. So you're also reporting a lot of incidents, and that's, of course, a first step to have a good safety culture, that is to be aware of what happens and what is the risks and then dealing with it. We have safety on every board meeting, and we start safety in every performance meeting because it's just part of what we do, and it needs to be part of what we do. I'm happy to see safety being on the agenda here as well. Then two slides left, three actually, but I will not dwell on this. And the reason I will sort of skip it lightly, it's probably the third reason that I joined because I think it's an incredibly strong strategy. And as I saw sort of also historically, this is not, this is the moment strategy, but it's actually consistent with long-term strategic aims and the legacy. So I think it's a very strong foundation. And I think this picture says it all. The reason I won't dwell on it because I saw in all the presentations this morning that it runs true what you are doing in your everyday. So you got it. No reason for me to pitch it in detail. But I do think it encapsulates what we do, and it's so important that we stay true to the strategy. And there's nothing in there about growth, about profits. We all know that that's kind of what fuels our ability to deliver on the strategy. But let's keep the strategic aim, and I'm sure the foundation is, well, I know they're in agreement with that, that it's the importance of what we do as a partner for sustainable change. It's important what we achieve in society and with our clients and that we can see the developments. We know we have to make money in order to also do it next year and the year after. So that's just part of business, and we are all mature and grown-ups about that. But focus on the strategy because that's really guiding where we are going and how we are developing the company. And I think the four headlines, decarbonizing for net zero, resilient societies and debility, resource management and the circular economy, and then the biodiversity and ecosystem, says it all. It's the global challenges, and Rambler is dealing with them. And I think we can be proud of that. Outlook. I didn't bring performance slides. I know management is giving you ample opportunity to listen to the performance slide. But I just wanted to say that the 24 outlook, we do expect a 4% to 6% growth. We do expect an EBITDA margin between 5.8 and 6.3, very precisely. We are at 4.6, I think, year-to-date, so we are behind. You all know that. We also have an ambition in '25 to be up towards 7.5. And let's just say, from 6.2, which we expect for the year, that's a long way to 7.5. And the reason I just want to give you that one performance measure is exactly what I said before. If we want to invest in tech, if we want to invest in sustainability, it requires that we do an effort. If you want the foundation to donate to good purposes, it requires that we make a profit so we can pay out dividends. And then a lot of us are shareholders or at least have the potential to be shareholders, so we also have a common interest in that. But we are progressing well on the strategic aims, and I have all the hopes in the world that we are also going to make it on the financial metrics that we have set ourselves as a goal. Last slide, and that's really outdated because that was made before I got here. So you can read the slide, but let me just... And maybe I'm preempting a question that is coming later, but I think the, you know, Rambler Americas and in the US, but Americas to include Canada and south of the border as well, is really an impressive growth opportunity for Rambler. It's not only growth in terms of revenue and profits, it's also growth in terms of competences and expertise and involvement in new industries or at least a broader involvement in industries that we know. So I think there's huge potential in the Americas, and I think that's the main message that you actually should take away from this slide. I know probably amongst some of you, there's always this discussion, is Denmark or US now biggest? To me, that's not important at all. It's important that we see the potential, and you demonstrated this morning that a lot of you see potential. And then you can reach for the stars. You don't always grab them, but at least seeing the potential and knowing what to pursue, that's the important thing. The green transition, it's all taking extreme speed in the US. You have an election coming up. I won't go into politics, but it's going to be interesting. And I'm sure that no matter which side wins, we will have a great future for Rambler Americas. So I think I'll pause there in order to make time.
Thank you. Thank you. Great, great comments. And thank you for acknowledging our safety, health and safety statistics. And that's something that we take very seriously. We have a strong safety culture here, so thank you for that. I appreciate your presentation. All right, now we'll get to some questions. We've gotten several. So the first one is for Sorin. I'll direct this one to you. So what do you perceive as the value of being a foundation-owned company to someone in the Americas?
It's a big question, but I think if you look at the purpose of the Rambler Foundation, it is to be the best owner of Rambler. So the company is owned by a not-for-profit entity that has a higher purpose. That means that when you as an employee in the Rambler Americas create value, either stays in the company, goes for growth or redevelopment of the company, or goes to the foundation and we donate it away. That basically, there's nothing escaping that system. I think that's a very compelling value proposition for employees when at the same time, you see that the values of the company is about making a world where nature and people flourish. So having to work in a place where there's real purpose, if that's for you, then Rambler is the place for you.
So just a quick follow-up. How do our employees in the Americas become more involved in the foundation?
I get this question a lot, and the most obvious way is, of course, to apply for the foundation advisory forum. Actually, the window is open until the 28th of June, so there's still time. And I think Robert explained what it's about. If you apply, then it's a random selection process, but it's still guided so that we have a representative selection of employees from across genders and geography and age brackets. So that's one opportunity. There's a lot of applicants, but you can get lucky. Another way is, of course, to engage with us in our philanthropy. And again, the easy way is to apply for one of the great Flourish opportunities that are there. So Flourish is a collaboration between the foundation, where we fund, and the company that supports volunteering. So if you look at the Flourish site on Rambler, you'll see the different opportunities that are there. And on and off, there will be open positions, and it's possible to apply and be a part of that. So that's the easy way to engage with us in philanthropy. A bit more cumbersome way is to actually apply. So we donate primarily to NGOs and research institutions when there is some sort of involvement of Rambler employees as experts, as volunteers, or just as someone who's sponsoring or somehow involved. Since we get so many applications, we primarily pick the ones where Rambler employees are involved. So if you have your favorite piece of research or an NGO you think the foundation should support, and it fits with our criteria, have a look at those at the website, then I think you should support, and that's the way of engaging with the foundation.
Great, thanks. Neil, do you have anything to add to either one of those questions?
Yeah, I think that first of all, about the... We were actually here yesterday. We had our third, I think, seminar on our new philanthropy strategy. And one of the things we have talked a little bit about because we want to donate more money or we want to actively to increase the amount of philanthropy in terms of money and maybe also being more sharp on programming. We have already, also from speaking to other foundations, talked about, yeah, that we maybe also have these more local initiatives. And I have to say that after visiting California and also have a great presentations and discussion led by Kathy Flores and also representation from our employee network groups, I think that this idea of also supporting locally where there's more kind of freedom for the different geographies because there are different ideas in different geographies could be actually a very good way also to look at our philanthropy. So it's not any promises, but I would say that the timing of us also being here is really pertinent for the last, you could say, nails we have to put into our philanthropy.
And we need more applications from the US.
Yeah, we do. We do, we do.
You are badly underrepresented.
I know some of you are working...
It's your own fault, so please apply.
We know that some of you are working with one of the chapters for Engineers Without Borders, and we know that we have support to some of the things that Tracy showed us today here at the NSP and so on. But I think that we should explore this that I got with me when I saw what was going on in the employee network groups. I think that is really something that, for me, would be something that we should discuss, if we should formalize, and maybe also do a little bit, as also thinking about, that it is not one-size-fits-all because we are very different in the different Rambler geographies. And as a foundation, we, of course, want to embrace all without saying that everybody should march in the same direction.
Fantastic, thanks. So team, you know, here, they're crying there. They need more applications, so feel free to volunteer. So the next question, I will turn to Robert. I know that you've been thinking about your strategy and the forward focus of the foundation. So what does the foundation look like in the future? And what do you think will change? And what do you think will stay the same?
Of course, the foundation, in the foundation, we want to develop with time. But of course, still also, we will be, maybe not in the forefront on changes since we come from a long-term thinking. We had founders who actually said, okay, be cautious, be patient, and then change things slowly, but change them. So I think when it comes to what the foundation does, as you heard now, we have a new strategy and also a new philanthropy strategy, so we will develop on that. The ownership role, I think, we will start to, we will continue to, of course, discuss with Klaus and his people on what are... Are we going to change anything in the roles? We will still keep the values flag high. And then, of course, when it comes to the composition of the foundation, yeah. Since Rambler's geography changes, I think also the choice of board members will expand in geography. But one should mention, note one thing, that is one of our criterias for pointing out members of the board is actually a long term in Rambler, having been managing Rambler values for a period, having shown that they are understood and they are lived. So it will probably not be tomorrow that we will change the composition of the board, but it will happen. It will be on the agenda, I can promise you.
Very good, thanks. Thank you. So just maybe a bit of a personal question. What drove you to be a leader in the foundation? And what do you see as your legacy that you want to pass on to younger generations?
I think, as I said, when I presented myself, I love the company. I mean, I have, of course, during the 43 years, sometimes sort of, okay, should you try something else, Robert? But I've not done it, and that means that when I stopped active work, that would be seven years ago, seven and a half year ago, it was quite natural for me to say, okay, can I do something for Rambler still in the foundation? And luckily for me, at that time, that the people who acted at that point decided who to be there, said, yeah, that would probably be a good idea, Robert. And that's also how I look at appointments in the foundation. It's good that you have a long tenure in the company and that you, like myself, actually know with yourself that you love the company. Because that's what drives me.
Excellent, excellent. Klaus, another question for you. You know, I was in Copenhagen last week presenting to the board, and you spent a lot of time this morning talking about the Americas business and strategy and where we want to go, our culture. And you shared some perspective already on what your impressions are of the Americas. Anything else you want to share in terms of, or advice that you have for us in terms of us achieving our goals moving forward?
No, I think it's probably a little bit repetitive, but I was just impressed with the presentations that we saw this morning. But I'm always impressed when I go into a Rambler meeting because there's so much competence and so much knowledge. I think it's the only... I'm on a few boards. It's the only board where you can be sure that you take something away when you go out of the board. You've not just delivered something, but you actually take knowledge away. You actually learn something about a project or circumstance for society. And I think that's just a great experience. And I had the same this morning. A lot of things where you get an explanation and you get, it's enlightening, to say the least. And then I think the most important thing is actually so gratifying to see that you see the potential. I said it before, and it's important to say that the potential has to be bigger than what you achieve because there has to be something to run for. But I saw in all the presentations, a desire not only to grow, but also a competence and a foundation to grow because we're already established, we're already in so many things. Some are smaller than others, but there's potential everywhere. And I think that's what I took away. So I will probably take that away from Finland and Sweden and from other places we are visiting. So you're not alone out there, but it was impressive.
Very good. Thank you, thank you. Now, I have one more question that I'm going to ask the board, and then we will open it up to questions of the audience. I'll be thinking about some things you might want to ask. So this last question is about allyship. And in the spirit of Pride Month and the learning moment that Kevin delivered, what does that mean to you? And I'll start, have maybe Neil start with that question.
Yeah, I think allyship is, of course, that you, I think, basically, for myself as a leader, is, of course, to share my privileges with somebody and that you are actually also giving opportunities to others. And then also that you either yourself have or you are giving an arm around another person and make this other person grow or hopefully somebody will help you to grow. And I think this is something that we have learned in Rambler is very important. And I think actually also, it has at least happened to me, so I have always been giving that further to others.
Very good. Sorin, want to share?
I think for me, it's the opportunity to help in all the little instances where you see that you're in a position to do something, whether it's microaggression or just that little thing that normally you would just brush away because it's nothing to do with you, but you step in and be an ally. I think that's what it's about.
Very good. All right.
You know, just because there's so much going on in the world for the time being, and there's so many opinions amongst us, amongst everybody. So I think one thing that is being an ally is also to be tolerant and to be understanding of what goes on around you and to appreciate that we come from different backgrounds, we have different views, and everybody has a right to express them. Democracy is under threat, so I think it also comes into organizations. Just keep that in mind. Just keep that in mind.
Great, great. Thank you. All right. Let's open it up to some questions. Just if you have a question, raise your hand. We have a couple of mics that are running. Ooh, wow.
Are you walking?
Walking. Keeping safety in mind.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, state your names. Please state your name and ask a question.
Me, I'm from Syracuse. I'm in the water market. I hear an echo of myself.
Is this okay?
We can hear you.
So first, I wanted to thank not only my opportunity to be here, but to finally like put a face and, you know, a body to everyone that's on the foundation. Also, I know you guys saw a lot of print, right, areas. With what you saw today, you know, I heard already, we learned things. We had ideas in California. So I want to know, did you have any ideas from, did it spark any ideas on you today, what you saw today? And if there's something unique about the Americas market that, you know, you saw here that maybe you don't see in other places?
Well, I can build on what I said before and then if others have come. But I think if there's anything you need to American market, it's big. It's massive. And then you're even looking north and south of the border. But it's a massive market in itself. So one thing you learn is the great opportunity. And I think that's maybe to me, I'm not an engineer and there's a lot of new stuff whenever I walk into the halls here. But to me, that was maybe the ah moment, not that it was surprising, but still it was tangible. And then I think one thing that was displayed, which I was very pleased with, is the collaboration that is with people outside of the Americas. And not only with India, but also with, you know, countries around where experts are sitting. And I think that is probably Rambo's biggest potential. That is collaboration across the geographies and across the disciplines, bringing different elements in play, no matter which project or which opportunity it is. And I think that was displaced to some extent. I think we can go much further in that area. So that was an opportunity I saw.
Yeah. And I have to dodge the question a bit and say, the best thing I saw was actually what I heard on Monday in the Oakland office with how you worked with EDI. And you're just way ahead of the rest of Rambo. So there's something to learn from you, no doubt about it. Yeah, great.
Great, thank you. Another question? Raise your hands.
Thank you so much for sharing this. My name's Kristiana, based here in Virginia on Gallegos team. And I know you all shared some great feedback for early career professionals when you were out on the West Coast. And I was wondering if you could elaborate on that a bit and share your advice and perspectives for early career professionals who want to be more engaged and kind of maximize their impact with Rambo?
Yes, I think I will speak a little out of my own experience here. I have, as I said before, worked in many different places in Rambo. And I think that is a very good way to develop your career. You will get a feeling for, a lot of feeling for what are the other, coming back to what Klaus says, the corporation, what are the other people doing? You will learn from them. You will actually also learn how you are yourself, maybe in situations where you're a little out of your normal area, a little out of your comfort zone. So that will, you'll learn about yourself, you'll develop yourself in that. So I think an advice to an early career would be to maybe be flexible on moving around. I think there will be opportunities for that in this organization. Then of course, I'll add one more thing. And probably also, in our organization, should be a little patient. I don't know about here, but in our part of the world, we will probably see a Rambo organizations which is a bit older than average, which means that it could seem a bit more difficult to actually advance upwards. So be a little patient on that because it will come, I can promise you.
I think if I can just add, I don't know this about the age contribute as a--
Ah, it's a measurement from Denmark. As I said, I have no idea of how it is over here.
I'm also born and bred in Denmark. And I think the most important thing when I came was to have this allyship and actually to have a network that you somehow, because Rambo is also here in the U.S., I'm sure, even though I haven't worked on the ground here, is a network-based company. So this about creating a network could be amongst, you could say, young people, but also people more senior. And I think it's important to understand that it is a Rambo value, even though it's probably not written there, is that in Rambo, every voice is counting. And every people can actually express their opinion. I think you also said that. And your next manager actually have to listen and take the dialogue. And I think sometimes young people I see in Denmark because of the older generation maybe have to insist about this. And I think you should just insist that you want to have that dialogue on the things that's important for you. That could be whatever workspace, it could be projects you want to go on, or it could also be more personal career ideas. So this about everybody has the equal, you could say, value to express their opinion and ask for things. And opposite, the manager actually has to listen and take the dialogue. I think that's a very important Rambo value. So because you're young or new or whatever, doesn't mean that you do not have the right to speak.
Just that, I'm tempted to say, I mean, look for opportunity and seize the opportunity. Somehow, the company is providing a lot of opportunity. And but we, you know, I'm not a great believer in career plans. They most often fail. But look for opportunity and grab the opportunity. And then I would say, actually, it's not early career only, it's throughout your life. So if there's always place to learn and there's always, also consider making room for somebody else. Go and do something where you can also develop, no matter what your age is. I'm still early in my career, so not really.
And I would just say that, you know, in our region, reach out to people, in network, I think that's something, a value that we need to emphasize, that if there's something that you want to hear about, that you want to, something you want to pursue, talk to the person, you know, they can actually help you. This is one of the reasons we're having the connections and conversations sessions so you can learn about what's happening and maybe reach out to different people that you may be interested in. So we definitely want to encourage that. All right. I will take one more question from the audience, and then we have one wrap-up question.
I think some of you know me, Matt Foster, I lead strategy for Rambo Americas. I was fascinated and I really liked the conversation we had at UC Berkeley. And it kind of builds on what we talked about a little bit. We talked about this Rambo values deeply rooted in Nordic heritage. Can you talk about what you mean by Nordic? And then also that departure maybe that took place about nine years ago with Americas kind of going from a Nordic values to a Rambo values?
I think that this about the Nordic heritage is of course something that we from the Nordic understand perfectly well. But it is actually something that UC Berkeley is also really interested in. And Monday, just to say that we had also Professor Mark Sandberg from the humanitarian faculty to talk about Nordic. And for, if you need to mention three things about the Nordics, it's something like environmentalism, which we today will call maybe sustainability. And I heard actually also today, both in energy and water, that you're actually drawing on this sustainability advancements or whatever solutions that you have, that we have in Nordic in energy and in water, for instance. So that's one thing. The second thing is this notion, which I'm not sure is always 100% correct, about gender equality. I think that gender equality also in the Nordic is maybe something we talk more about than what is actually real. And that's also something that we need to also express. And that's also why I'm so happy when I come here and hear your Women's Network and whatever you have talking about these things because we are not so good at talking at it because we are born and raised with. That is of course very fine, which it is of course not. But the third thing, which is maybe the most important thing about the Nordics, is trust. So that's what people from the outside, when they look at the Nordic society, look at these things. And I think if we look at Rambo and what Rambo said himself, it was about the humanitarian spirit and the equality, what we just discussed. One employee, one voice, you need to be heard. And this about that we have to give back to society. We need to actually work with something that is good for society, which I think the whole group strategy is all about. So this is about the Nordic. It's not, sometimes it seems like it's something we can only be in the Nordics. And this of course not true because it is universal because it is these universal kind of ideas about sustainability, about equality, about trust. So and I think when I come here to the Americas, and thank you for that, Sheryl, because I think that is very much also your work, I feel that in the organization, that you have this spirit, you have this drive for sustainability, you have the drive also for equality and many more dimensions than just for women or for gender. And of course, also, I also feel that you have a lot of trust in the organization. I don't think there's anybody standing there feeling difficult. But it's how I see this Nordic thing, that I think, I'm happy to be in a company. And maybe we shouldn't call it Nordic because as I said, it is universal. But I think I'm happy that we have a company who tries to run this earning money, but still also having this humanitarian spirit. I think that's super important. And at least that appeals to me. And I hope it appeals to all of you and also to the future generations.
Fantastic, thank you. Now, we're out of town, but I'm, we're going to do this last one. It's a rapid fire. And for each of you, just three words that describe your experience that you've been here this week in the Americas. We'll start with you, Robert. Just three quick words.
I'm impressed. I feel very welcome and good luck to everybody. Short, enlightening and inspirational.
That was my words.
I sit here.
Always best to be first.
I feel happy. I feel really inspired and I also have a great faith in all of you.
Yeah.
Soren?
Warm, welcome and full of potential.
Fantastic. Give a big round of applause to our audience. Thank you so much for our guests. Thank you so much for our guests. Very enlightening conversation. I think we all enjoyed it and learned a lot. So thank you. Thanks for being here. Thanks for spending the time with us. And thanks for your support of the Americas. And thank you, audience, online in Arlington for your engaging questions, conversation and being here. All right. Now to happy hour. Thank you.